See, that was my timing. See, I was like... Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Everyone rise please. Uh, Councilman Slakka, could you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longkart.
Here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Another big budget crowd here tonight. Um, let's have public comment this time. Any of the public wishing to speak at this time, please come forward. Okay. All right. We'll say public comments over with. And Lisa.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you go ahead and give your presentation?
Yes, sir. The first document that you have in your budget packet is your sum-
And I'm gonna ask everybody, because the volume's down a little low. Everybody kinda like Roger up to those microphones there.
Oh, my. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Your first document that you have in your packet before you is your summary of budget changes. These are changes that were completed subsequent to your July 17th workshop. The first section in this document are your revenue changes. These are the, a result of the state revenue estimates that we've received, and they were released by the state since your July draft completion. The first item that's listed there is your communication services tax. That had an increase of $42,000 for the year. That was, that was excellent. The next three items are decreases, and those are related to gas tax that's collected at the state level and remitted to us, and it is a continuation of the negative trends that we've seen in our gas taxes. So, the combination of those three items, the reduction of $110,000. So, your net reduction in revenue for this draft is $68,000. Your next section that you have before you is your expenditure changes. You will see, we'll discuss briefly the general fund changes and then the capital project changes. Um, I thought I'd just briefly mention, uh, these are changes that have occurred, um, either they were direction at the July budget workshop, or you've had a downtown redevelopment workshop, and you've also had some subsequent city council meetings. So, these were, I'm gonna note, um, briefly, quickly where those were, uh, direction was given to staff to make these changes. The urban forestry program, we have that that was from the budget workshop. The sheriff's safety program, which is a special event, that was direction given at the downtown workshop. The street drainage and canal maintenance, and actually the traffic signal maintenance, those two items, those are staff just merely reallocating to different line items within the Public Works Call Center. So, no total change. The next item, front street park, plant flowering trees, that's from the downtown workshop. The landscape maintenance, that's actually at Kentucky Street Park. We have that that was direction at the budget workshop. Sustainability, energy initiative, uh, reflection from the budget workshop. The budget shelters, we have that from a subsequent city council meeting, direction given to staff. And all of those general fund expenditure increases were actually netted against the general fund contingency, so that you will know there were no increases in your general operating funds as a reflection of these changes. The final section is your capital project section, and, and for any of these changes, staff is here to answer questions, and also with respect to the capital projects, you have staff here for those. The first line item that's listed, Carolina Extension, um, it's my understanding that those, the funding for that line item was put in there to review the project feasibility. The old 41 four-laning Benita Beach Road to Collier County. This million dollar increase in current year funding is merely a reflection of timing changes. For this, the total capital project that was included and still is in your capital improvement plan, the total cost of that project did not change. Staff moved timing up so that you would begin spending funds on this project this next year versus one year out. So, it's just a total change in timing. And the same with the unpaved streets. The $70,000 was actually projected to be spent in this current year. Staff is now projecting that it will be spent in this upcoming budget year that we're looking at, really just timing change, no total project change at all. The next few items that you see listed there, those are additional capital improvement projects that were placed in your 10-year capital plan that you all see, um, and we wanted to call them to your attention because they weren't in your prior draft, and we also wanna let you know we put them in there, and this fiscal year coming up with, um, no funds allocated to them. Okay? And those are all the changes that we have, so we wanted to know if y'all have any questions about what's presented to you today.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Sure.
Briefly. Lisa, uh, we have netted the 33.5 against the contingency. Can you give the council, just for their information, the balance of the contingency at this point?
Yes, sir, I sure can. The general fund contingency balance is $116,500. That's in your budget draft.
That's fine. And also, on, under capital improvements, unpaved streets, we wanna make it very clear that the $70,000 that's here is, is a rollover from this current fiscal year for a total of $200,000 next year for unpaved streets.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Anything else from staff before we go to questions? Nope? Uh, council? Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. The, if, if the slots referendum does not pass, should we not rethink the four-lane paving from Benita Road, Benita Beach Road South on Old 41?
Old 41 South from Benita Beach Road to, uh, um, Collier County line was something that we had in the long-term capital projects, and I think that based on the direction that we got from council, not only at the budget workshop, but subsequently, um, the determination was that even if we didn't move ahead with the complete four-laning, that there was, um, a desire to go ahead, at least with some widening of the pavement shoulders to increase safety along there in terms of bike path and pedestrian traffic. So, this million dollars won't build the project. It won't really be the four-laning. It'll just help us get closer to the four-laning project if we do it, and also get us closer to being able to do that pavement extension. Uh, the long-term project, again, we would be bringing back to council before we make any action on that, and that could or could not be contingent on what goes on with the, the dog track.
I, I don't wanna be the one that's, that came out against safety, because that's not my point. But it's a million dollars that, um, I'm not certain that, yeah, I'm not sure where we're going with that. But I, I did go back and look at the 2008 traffic study, and it, it was down farther on the priority list than, than where I thought it might be, since we bumped this up to this year. So, I, all I'm asking is if, if we need to go back and take a look at that, I think we should. Particularly slots don't come in. I mean, yeah, the referendum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Any other, any other questions, comments?
I'd like to comment.
Bill.
Interesting, Steve. Uh, of course, we don't know what the dog track is, when this, if, if the, if the, uh, the, is voted on and received in good way. If it's not, that's a different story, but, uh, also the traffic increases and the deal that we make with the dog track will determine how much they may contribute or in some fashion. So, I, I agree with what you said.
Okay. Good. Uh, Peter.
Right. Um, I guess, learning as I go here, I just wanted to throw what I had mentioned before about, um, some trees, some palm trees on 41 and Benita Beach Road, and is now the time to talk about that, or later, or next year? Quite frankly, so.
And in what, in what location was that?
Well, I was, you know, I guess what I'm, um, my point being that, um, lining trees, um, up and down 41, Benita Beach Road, I think quite frankly, perception is reality, and if our town looks like a million dollars, then I think property values are gonna go up. I think business values are gonna go up. I think we're gonna attract new businesses in town, and, um, I just don't know if now's the time to discuss that, later on, or is that something I've missed the boat on and we need to look at for next year? But, uh, it's something that I wanted to bring up.
Okay. What's in the, what's in the plan for, for the upcoming year, so far as landscaping?
We're gonna get that momentarily here. I think John's ahead of me on looking through the budget here, but, um, we have put additional money in here this year for landscaping purposes. Now, whether they were exactly for 41, Benita Beach Road and trees on those, um, is probably a little unclear. It's, it's not too late to talk about this. You have this hearing as well as the next one to make any changes to the budget that council would like to make. So, what do we have in for landscaping?
The section of, and I'm not sure if this is the complete section, but we do have money allocated to the section of Benita Beach Road Phase Two, the, the part that's being completed right now, um, Old 41 to Lime, and we have $125,000 in there for enhanced landscaping on that piece. What we tried to do with those changes that you're seeing here is, whereas in the past we've had just a general, uh, subcategory of enhanced median landscaping, we now tried to break it down into sections so that you and we could both more clearly follow the progress on each segment. So, while we don't have any other segments funded at this point, we can certainly do that at your direction, or take it out of the contingency, capital contingency money.
Well, I'd like to have a discussion about it, see what other council members think. Um, I know I'd mentioned before, you cross that, you know, from Collier County heading north on 41, boom, you know you're in Lee County, 'cause there's no more trees. And I'm not saying we need to copy Naples. Quite frankly, I would, I would recommend that we don't copy Naples. I think we do our own thing and continue to make ourselves unique, but I think I'm just, you know, I see a lot of roads, and I know we need roads, and I'm in favor of those, but, uh, I just don't wanna asphalt and cement everything to the point where we're not, uh, greening it up as well, so.
Uh, I'll come right to you, Martha. Didn't we have a conversation here last time around, and it was in regards to Imperial, Imperial Parkway?
Yep.
And that we kinda prioritize if we were gonna do some landscaping, that, that, that's gonna be the first road, uh, on, on the top of the list for various reasons? Did, did, did we not decide that?
Yes, we did.
Thought you had, yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe that's in there.
And that's, and that, that is in here, right?
Are you the next? Okay.
But it's not in there, there's no, there's no money in there for it? Or, there you go. Take a look.
Yeah, we'll take a look.
All right. Martha, go ahead, while we're, while he's, while he's looking.
Sure. Well, I agree with Peter and with the two gentlemen on either end. Um, if the referendum passes, which I think it will, it's still gonna take some time for that funding to come along, the revenues, or the receipts, the slots to even start, because there's still gonna be an issue about, uh, professional licensing and things like that. They're still gonna have a hurdle to go through, maybe a year or two, and that should probably be on our lobbying, uh, list this year. But, um, I totally agree that when we, and we discussed this at the last meeting, I don't wanna take anything away from Imperial, because I, that definitely needs to be done. But, uh, the gateway to the city at the interstate, the, the, at least the terminuses, the, around the, um, coming into the city, both north and south on 41, on 41, US 41. There was a reason, Ben, and maybe you can enlighten us, we didn't put a certain diameter of tree on US 41 because of the speed limit and some kind of liability, and Gary seemed to feel that we shouldn't put large caliber trees on US 41. I don't know, they're doing it in Naples. I don't know why we can't do it, but.
Yeah, it was because, uh, in, when there's a certain speed limit, you're supposed to put a certain type, you're not supposed to put a certain type of re, tree, because they have to be frangible. When you hit it, it's supposed to bust off, so you don't kill somebody with the big royal palms and stuff like that. And, uh, you're, you're right. I think that in some areas, uh, Collier County did just kind of decide to ignore that. Did you find anything? And then we'll get back to the question.
The question about Imperial is on page 149 of your budget. What, what you were seeing in the, in the one-page summary is just the additional line items that we've put in, but in the original budget, on page 149, you've got two items, actually. Imperial Parkway, um, and this is the, the section that you were talking about, um, for Benita Beach Road to, um, East Terry is $200,000, and then we also have an additional $40,000 for upsizing irrigation on the northern stretch, north of, uh, East Terry.
Okay. So, Imperial Parkway has?
Done.
How much?
It's $240,000 altogether.
$240,000. And then there's subsizing on this.
Yep.
Um, and Audrey, oh, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanna bring out one other point, why we're not like, um, Collier County, and that is the date of when the beautification project occurs is very important to look at with the Florida statutes dealing with vegetation management. Uh, this is with signs and having view zones. I will send a memo to staff explaining the view zones and how, when you're doing the streets, you have to look at the existing locations where there are billboards, allow them their view zone, and you can do your vegetation outside of the areas that are, that are otherwise prohibited by statute.
Yeah. John, go ahead, and I'll get back to.
With regard to funding for enhanced landscaping on US 41, you'd have to look in the year, the fiscal year 13, 14, again, on page 149, if you look out one further year, we've got a section of US 41, Benita Beach Road to Old 41 for enhanced median landscaping at another $200,000.
Okay.
And, and, right.
So, the next fiscal year beyond.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
And council, I think that, that, um, things are kinda cyclical in this, this regard, landscaping, not landscaping, whatever. But I think really, I mean, what I would suggest, and what I think that we've talked about before, is that, yes, let's, let's decide, you know, let's do landscaping, but when you do that, are we gonna do it up here, just kinda, just kinda decide by ourselves? Shouldn't we have a program like, uh, Lee County has, which they actually have a citizens committee, and, and they make, they make recommendations, they do it pragmatically? I think that it's on, it should be based on need and the base, best place to bang for your buck. In other words, do you, do you put more landscaping where you already have it, or do you put landscaping where there is none? I mean, I think those are good questions, but I, I don't think that we should kinda do it, just kind of, uh, whoever screams hardest. But, yes, John.
And what we had planned on doing, again, based on your direction, was, we, we've already identified the first highest priority, and again, that's Imperial from Benita Beach Road northeast, Terry. We're gonna go ahead with what, um, Jim had showed you as the pictures of the county's core level, as the initial, um, impact that we can make. At the same time, the tree committee has been given those plans, understanding that while we go ahead with that core level, they can feel free to come back with recommendations at some other point about enhancing that or adding to that in the future. We don't wanna hold up our ability to go forward with the initial plan, but obviously we can add to it, and that's where we hope to get more citizen input on exactly what level, or is everybody comfortable with that, what cost?
Good, good, good. Uh, Martha, did you wanna finish up, and then I'll go back to Janet, or go down to Janet?
Sure. Um, so, uh, with the design, oh, I'm jumping ahead, on Old 41, we've spent money, uh, for very preliminary design, is that not right? So, what we have, um, budgeted here, I would say, take some of that for landscaping, and if we need to, um, prioritize where we're gonna do landscaping, um, have the tree committee do that, or whatever, but, uh, I would say, and, you know, I'm not fond of Carolina Street, but I see it's a small amount, that's gonna be very expensive. Um, I, I would just say that, well, that's where we could take some money and put towards landscaping this year, and then do a little more next year, each year add-on.
Yeah. And I think the conversation with, with Jim Melton was up here, was, that we had had, was that, you know, and it was been brought to our attention, that there is no sidewalk, nothing, on Old 41, south of Benita Beach Road, all the way down in Collier County. There's some residential areas down in there, there's a Turtle Creek, there's a lot of places down in there. If anybody rides a bicycle down there or walks, they either, it's in the road, you're down the middle of the road. I think that, for my own self, I, I think that that's what we were going to look into, was the timing. It was, is, is the timing of the project such that the Collier County's gonna come in there? Or do we need to go ahead, because we can pretty cheap, like we did on Benita Beach Road, add shoulders to where at least a bicycle can ride without someone getting killed? Is, is spending a million dollars on widening the road worth saving somebody's life? I don't know. I think it is.
And frankly, that's why staff decided to move some of the dollars in out years on that project up to, to meet your expectation about it being a priority. Hopefully, as we find out more about what Collier County is doing, more about after November, what the situation with the dog track may or may not be, uh, we'll have a better idea of how to best use those dollars, but at the very least, we hope to be able to do that pavement widening so that we create a, a little more safer situation.
And I, and I think y'all are right. If, if the dog track's not coming through, there's no sense for-laying the road. But that doesn't, that does not remove the fact that it is as substandard a road as you're gonna find in Lee or Collier County, and, and it needs either a bike path or widen shoulders. Janet.
Thank you. That was where I was heading myself, is that I was gonna ask, um, request consideration of, like we did on sections of Terry Street, where we did have the room when we widened the road, was that I don't like to ride a bicycle, I'm speaking for myself, on the shoulder. It is very frightening and scary place to be. I think that being progressive with like, what a lot of other cities are doing, is the widened shared sidewalk that's apart from the road is a safer way to travel, because this is, it's sometimes young people on these bicycles, and they are right there, and there's a bumper right. I, so, I would really like to see those dollars be a combined widened sidewalk, if at all possible.
Depending on what the ultimate design for that section looks like, that's obviously where we'd like to go. Uh, but I think to the mayor's point, even if there are no other dramatic changes to circumstances, no changes with the dog track or anything, uh, by moving these dollars forward, we should at least be able to do, um, you know, an initial widening to get some benefit, some, you know, uh, improvement in that situation. That won't be money, you know, on, not wisely spent, because it'll meld into the, the overall project once we go forward. Uh, so hopefully, it'll be able to give us a little bit of benefit upfront that we can then incorporate into the, the ultimate design.
Excellent. Well, just asking, they, just to keep that on the back burner when those plans are being looked at.
Okay. Good.
One more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, the tree committee did meet today at 4 o'clock, and they did make a recommendation, um, to remove one of the trees who, that is very expensive in lieu of a, and it is not even a native, in lieu of trees that is a native and will give as much beautiful, uh, bang to the buck and save us some money. So, uh, gotta love it.
We appreciate their help.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And they're worth every penny we pay those guys, aren't they?
Yeah.
I mean, and more.
And more.
And more. Uh, Pete, Jess, what's that?
Yes, I guess, um, what are the costs for, and I echo Janet's thoughts on the widened sidewalks, if you will, as opposed to the widened bike lane? Um, as a, some on-again, off-again biker that has now just reduced to my biking around my neighborhood, because a little scared, and you know, you hear people on the Sanibel Bridge and what have you. Um, roughly, do we know the cost difference? I mean, actually, I'm, I'm all in favor of the widened sidewalks, but I was just curious cost-wise, if we had a rough idea?
I don't know.
Versus the widened streets?
I, I don't know if I could quantify that for you now, but I do know that, little I know from having worked with Daryl before, and Jim, and now Matt, is that what you're talking about, if you're not talking about just widening the pavement, what you're talking about is a, you know, the full-blown design would involve not only, um, drainage as well as the roadway, uh, and drainage there with land acquisition. I mean, you're talking about a, a, a very expensive project, um, overall. And again, we, we don't wanna give people the expectation that by being able to spend this million dollars, that you're gonna get a finished product that you're gonna be happy with going forward forever. All we're looking to do is create a, a safer situation there.
Okay. You go ahead.
And then we were talking about a, uh, tree committee. Would this tree committee need to be different than the tree committee you're on, same tree committee, to bring recommendations? Okay. To the, for moving forward with trees and?
Matt was at the meeting, so he was, he does have that recommendation.
Okay, great.
Uh, you mean, you mean, if we go with a landscape, if we go with a landscape recommendation committee, would it be this committee or a landscaping committee? Is that what you're asking?
Right, to bring recommendations annually for budgets and trees, and I guess my, my beating the drum for increased funding for increased trees, yeah.
I think that they're up to, I think you could ask them, but I think that they're up to the challenge, I think.
Awesome. And I can't assist, because you're on it, but, um, let me know.
Everybody has input.
All right. Awesome.
Okay. Uh, any other questions, Eric?
Not a question, but, uh, the last couple of weeks, I've had to travel to Estero, and, uh, I've already advised, uh, we haven't had the grass cut in medium and along the fences, which is, I'm, I'm just rehashing something, everybody knows about it, it's gonna be taken care of. But how tragic it is to leave Benita, and, and especially against the fences, I mean, the fences are now growing green out, out from, I don't know if it's weeds or whatever it is, uh, on both sides of the road, and then you get to the Estero line, and it's like, huh, how beautiful is this? So, I think, I don't know where we are with the, with the cutting of the grass, 'cause I, I think I said it was this high in the mean, was, that's a private company that does that, right?
That's the county stretch of the road?
No. City.
You're talking about, you were talking about north?
No.
Or, uh, you're not talking about north of Terry Street?
Yeah, north of Terry Street.
North of Terry Street's the county, it's the same thing.
That's the county road, and we've been in touch with the county.
Oh, I thought that was, that we had a private contractor doing that. And, and on our parch, on our portion. Is north, oh.
If it is our, if it is our portion.
North is county's portion to do.
Yes.
That's their responsibility, north of Terry.
Even, even along the, uh, where the, where the walls are?
You bet. You bet.
Well, uh, that's, I know it's, I, well, I made a motion, or talked to somebody about that.
So, you can get a bigger stick out, that's what I'm telling you.
Well, oh, gee. You don't wanna criticize the county, that would, that's not the way to, you don't wanna do that. Exactly.
We're a little late in the game for that, I think.
Now, just, but just so you know, we've been in touch with the county today, and we've put that work order in and told them that, you know, this is unacceptable, and we need to have, uh, this level of service. We're not sure that they're going to be able to respond to that, because they've bid it out, to do it, if anything, at a higher level, means it's gonna cost more money, and that's gonna be a difficult thing for them. But we are looking at some alternatives as well, so.
Well, it, it's very important for the image of Benita, especially with Benita, uh, Lake's putting the, their beautiful landscaping up on their property is, is an example of how it should be done, and, uh, it's important that, uh, that, that be done. Now, let me say something else, but I've been criti, I've criticized before about the interchange. Whoever's taking care of that interchange is really doing a great job. That, that's a new, that's, that's our responsibility, right? 'Cause it looks perfect coming off the inter, off the, uh, interchange, but then that, then it stops.
That's the city, that's the city of Benita.
I know, I know that. But I've been, in the past, I've said it, but whoever the contractor is, is doing an excellent job on, on that particular location.
We will pass that along. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, Bill, and I, I think to, to your point there, um, I think we're all gonna let our staff try to diplomatically handle that situation, but you can see the, as, as they're doing that, the grass is getting taller, and, and, you know, I, I think I described it, I forget how I described it, it probably wasn't real, real complimentary, but it was, do you remember?
Apocalyptic, I think.
Apocalyptic. And I think I was correct. And I think I was correct. I mean, I mean, that, I think that, I think we can all agree that that's intolerable. That can't be like that. And however we have to fix that, that's what we need to do, wouldn't you not agree?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's do it. Okay, yes.
And while we're talking grass growing really high, corner of Old 41 and Benita Beach Road, along the sidewalk there is impassable all the way down, they've taken the sidewalk out where they've done the construction on Benita Beach Road, but right on that corner where the old Colonial Bank building is...
Oh, that's atrocious.
It's horrible. So, hey, Chris?
The, what, yeah, we've been having complaints about that from my wife, so... So I told her to call Carl. And being the good mayor that I am.
Which she did.
Which she did immediately. And then Carl called me, which doesn't do anything.
Thought I'd complete the circle.
I'm like, what? That's not the way, wait a minute, it goes this way. And so, yeah, and the story, I think the moral of that story is when a contractor takes over the road, he takes over the road under that construction. So it's actually the contractor's job to take care of the grass and to maintain it. So that's what they're, that's who they're wrestling with.
Not their highest priority.
And of course, the contractor's like, so that's who we're having to try to get to cut it.
Well, and it is part of a construction zone, but I will also tell you that Sarah Clark, the project manager from the county on this job, has indicated to us that they've been in contact with the contractor advising them that they need to do something about the grass.
Yes.
Doesn't the property owner, property owner under our ordinance have responsibility to take care to the right-of-way?
To the edge of the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yes.
To the road.
Well...
We've given opinions in the past that if it's on a dangerous road, like an archery hall, we're not going to require somebody to send their kid out mowing right to the edge.
But we are going to try to get that done.
Right, right.
Okay, towards the budget here, any other questions, suggestions? I think, quite frankly, staff, thank you very much. Nice job. This is real, simple, pretty elegant. I think we're where we need to be, that's for sure. I think that good news is ahead of us for next year and I think we're going to be in a great position to do some great things next year so far as, you know, our budget, so. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to make a couple of comments.
They'll go ahead.
I have to blow my nose first, go ahead.
Why is he blowing his nose? While he's blowing his nose, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
Just real quick.
Sneak right in there.
We made a decision the other day at city council about $25,000 for the EDC. I don't know if we're going to talk about that with our $100,000 of economic development. I don't know if you had some thoughts about that, Mr. McIntosh?
I did, and I checked, there were several things I had questions on, but that one was one of them. And as I understand it, I don't mean to speak for the city manager, but that $75,000 is not EDC money. That $75,000 is city money to be allocated as council thinks appropriate.
There's $100,000 in the proposed budget. 25 of that is going to be paid to the EDC per council direction at the last meeting. The balance of 75 is for the city's use in website updates, rebranding, other kind of efforts, promotional efforts that we would like to make on behalf of the city. Unless the council tells us to pay the EDC additional money, that, those funds are for city's use.
Yep.
Thank you.
And to reflect the council's strategic priority for economic development.
Yes.
Including Old 41.
And I did call the EDC to make sure that that was their understanding as well, and it is.
Yep. Thank you, thank you very much. Bill?
All right, I'm going to give you about seven minutes, so please be patient with me. This article appeared, and I guess many, many have seen it, the article in the paper, I could, did you see this one?
Yes.
I will be happy to pass that along, Mr. Fairhous.
Well, there's a reason why I want you to read it because it's really good stuff. And since I've been a resident in my 20th year now, I've seen a lot of things happen and a lot of positive things. And I've also seen the workings of the city council before I was on council and being part of it now. And I have seen how the monies have flowed in and out. And I know that we have overall done a very good job of watching the budget. And I happen to think that it's time to make a reduction in the mill rate. And the reason why I say that to you is because I have taken a lot of time to look through the budget. I did talk to Carl on Friday in reference to this. And I'm recommending that we reduce the budget by two cents from 7, 82 to 80, 73. It's based on these facts. That picture that you see there is one of the reasons. And this year, with impact fees, because of the large terraces, assisted living place, we received a large amount of impact fees, 435,000, which were not anticipated in last year's budget, I don't think. And we also have one other assisted living place that isn't out of the ground yet, and that's coming along. It probably won't be as large as the one we see on 41, but it's substantial. In addition to that, there's a lot of rumblings in terms of residential construction east of I-75, behind me in Worthington Country Club, the Quail West is quite active in terms of hearing things and they're going to have some of those houses in Benita Springs. And I know, I've spoke to the general manager there, and they're also contemplating a major move to enhance their place with more homes in the future. They're very optimistic about it. The impact fees for this year, it looks like we're going to be, well, I've calculated 397,000 more than we anticipated, something like that. It might be off a few thousand. I don't know as much as Lisa does. And then the other thing is, we have a very active legal department with Joe and Audrey, but Joe Farber is the one that handles the code enforcement, forfeiture and fines and everything else. And they have done, in the years that I've been on the board, I've done an excellent job of, after Chris gets done with the people, he takes care of, over the other stuff, and they have collected large amounts in excess of what was budgeted. So what I'm thinking is, is it may not be as large every year, but they do a fantastic job also. The other thing is, we have people that own commercial property and the people that are non-domiciled in the city of Benita Springs over the last three or four years have been getting a reasonable amount of tax reduction, the commercial businesses and the non-resident. But there are a group of people who haven't gotten the benefit out of that and actually have had their total tax increase because of the recapture rule. I looked at that and I looked at everything. I know about the contingency reserve, but we also have two, I looked at the page, the one, two, can you, Lisa, for me, please? Can you answer the, we have undesignated reserves of 2,414,560 on page five? Is, is that...
I'm sorry, what page are you on, sir?
Page five. It's a summary.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 2,414. Now, how much does two cents cost?
We have calculated that at about $132,000, sir.
Right, okay. That's the amount. Now, what that does is, it also enhances the EDC situation, in my opinion, because it shows that the city has the capabilities of not only doing the normal work, but we're also going to enhance the value because people that are buying houses are looking for good value. Now, I realize we only pay 5% of the total tax, but we should be the lowest-cost place to live with our 5%. And we can do that at the same time, making sure everything else is taken care of, including the trees, the landscaping, all that. We're in a wonderful position, but two cents. So I would like to make a motion to reduce the mill rate by two cents from 82.73, is it, to 80.73?
Right now, it's proposed at .8273, so you're proposing a motion to make it .8073.
That's correct.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. And council discussion?
Please.
Steve?
Yes, well, it comes out of the blue. Obviously, we haven't really had that discussion and we've been through at least one iteration of whether we're going to do something with millage rate or not. A couple of questions come to my mind immediately. Where are we on required debt ratios, you know, to, is there a debt ratio that we have to show in terms of revenue versus debt service for a city?
Yes, sir.
How close are we on that if we take $132,000 more out?
We should be fine, sir.
Okay. Bill, I don't disagree, we need to do all the things you're talking about, but if, if we came up with additional money this year, I would prefer to see it going to a reduction in debt than I would operational reductions or increases. That's, that's my starting point.
We're going to let everybody talk and then we'll come back to you. How about that?
And I frankly haven't thought this thing through and I'm a little taken back that we're at this point in the budget process and we get a request like this, but that's all I have so far.
Why don't we just come down to line, comments? Go ahead.
Sure. My first thought is that you never ever want to cripple yourself. What if these developments don't happen? What if at the 10th hour, they decide, well, we're going to hold off and, you know, we've put ourselves in a possible pickle? And I just thought here, thinking about how we just talked about landscaping enhancements and how that goes off, pushing things off, projects off to the next year because we don't have the money this year. And I'm not sure that you'd just want to go backwards at this time.
Okay. Stephen?
Yeah, well, right now, we're pretty much the lowest in the entire state, are we not, in the millage rate? And what, this 100, was it $110,000 we would lose in the millage rate?
$132,000, sir.
$132.
Yes, sir.
What does that amount to for each person, roughly?
Approximately $5 per year.
$5.
For a $250,000 house valued last year.
I understand. And you're okay with that, Lisa, if that was approved, that we would be comfortable?
We would need to make some adjustments and some other line items to allow for it, but that could be feasible if that's direction from city council. I would be happy to charge forward with whatever you all would like for us to do.
Mr. Manager?
You could do it if the council were interested in this. There's probably a couple of different ways you could do it if you wanted to. Councilmember Lonkart talked about the reserve, the undesignated reserve fund. That's an opportunity where you can take it from. You can also take your contingency fund down to zero. That would be $116,000 you'd pick up there. The additional amount could either be handled by savings through the year or from the reserves amount. Remember, remember this year is that, different from prior years, your reserves are now going to be appropriated, if you will. Okay, so you, we can't, staff can't go off and spend your reserves, but what it does is it allows you to get to them easier should you need to during the year. So between, if you were to clear out your contingency right now, you could go into reserves later on if you wanted to, if you had a project you wanted to do, you'd still have easy access to your reserves if you wanted to do that.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Bill, I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I think I feel a little bit like Steve. I was not expecting this discussion to take place and I would, I would prefer to think about it for a while and maybe at the next budget meeting. Go ahead, if that's okay with you.
This is the, this is the meeting we established the millage.
We're going to keep talking here, if that's okay. Good, good. Pete?
Yeah, to proving that the sunshine law is alive and well, first, I'm hearing of it too, so. Here we are with the discussion and, you know, to me, I guess in apples to oranges, to me, it also sends the right message, like I'm talking about the trees in a different kind of vein, that Benita Springs is open for business, smart growth, good growth, sustained growth. And we're serious about attracting new business. We are attracting new businesses and we're going to do it for less, so. Not a lot of, not a lot of thought about this, but let's, let's continue to have the conversation, but those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, Martha?
Take two tax cuts and call me in the morning. I had to say it, I'm sorry. Okay, but, you know, I'm not opposed to this. What I want to know, Bill, Councilman Lonkart, is, because we voted for doing this before, have you researched what the millage rates are in the locality so we could truly say we are the lowest? Because I know Fort Myers Beach beat us out. We keep saying, oh, we're, you know, the lowest for a city over 12,000, which is kind of qualifying it. I mean, if we really want to say we're the lowest...
Funny you should say that.
Good, I'm glad I asked.
I don't know if I should comment.
Well, if I could ask him just a question and get back to me.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
I happened to be in Larry Keiker's company the other night and his mill rate is 71 cents, but he also only has 7.7 and a half, 7 and a half, 7 million, 7...
7,000 people.
7,000 people. So that's really not a fair comparison because I was trying to toot in our own horn when I was with him and because he's going to be a county commissioner, so we are, we, I don't know, I didn't research that part. I researched the most important part, which is what we're doing as a city right now. I'm more concerned with that. And then understanding, Janet mentioned these projects coming out of the ground. Toll Brothers is the largest builder in the country. Toll Brothers would not start a project of that magnitude in a, in a situation where they didn't think they could do it. Could happen, but the likelihood, even what they've spent already is millions. First of all, they had to acquire it. And another thing is, the Benita Isles, which is on Old 41, is a Canadian builder with 220 units. That's in other parts of the city. In my district, Village Walks still has 500. That's owned by Pulte. Pulte is building, Quail West is building, Palmira is not finished. There's a condominium development that's going to be between San Remo and Palmira Country Club of 152 units. That's in community development right now. Spanish Wells is not built out. So there's a lot of things happening. And I see that over a period of time, as we go through this year especially, if I'm proven wrong, that's okay. But I don't think that this amount of money will have any impact whatsoever on the budget. As a matter of fact, it'll make, it'll make us even more attractive and it's all about making the bid. It's not, the amount of money is very small. And I hope I answered your questions, Janet.
Martha?
No, I was, well, she mentioned about, we don't know if these people are going to build.
Well, if I could just take it back for a second.
Go ahead.
$132,000, I mean, is it really going to cost us $1 million to put a sidewalk in? What about the projection we have on Shangri-La? I mean, what we're paying for the properties, I think is probably overestimated for the appraisals over there because I know what my property is appraised at and if I'm paying, I don't know that we should pay that much money to those folks. Sorry, folks out there. Anyhow, I'm not opposed to that. I would say throw in the bargain, take out the Carolina Street Extension, you can save yourself $25,000 right there. Because, well, you know how I feel about that, but I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
I got one more thing. Oh, go ahead. All right, Ben, you didn't get a chance.
I'm going to let you go.
Fire away.
Go at it again, how about that? I, however, have a different way of looking at this and, which is, I don't think it's time to do this. I don't think it's time to, I think the time will come. I think the time will come when property values will start to rise again. They haven't yet. Property start, values will start to rise, buildings will start coming out of the ground. Everything that is happening right now is speculative still. The commercial properties, they haven't come near to coming around. You saw the statistics. They're still vacant. So I think it's premature. Do I think that next year will be a different story? I, I hope so. I suspect so, but that's speculative. I'm not willing to gamble the fiscal stability of the city on that. Now, you can say that it doesn't mean much to the city to do $100 and something thousand, but by the same token, really, really? I think this is a tax reduction just for the sake that we say we did it. Now, if you're saying that this means a lot, we're going to do it because for economic development, those companies are already coming here. And they're coming here for the quality of life and they're coming here because they see fiscal responsibility and they see a community that's willing to invest in itself. If this community is not willing to invest in itself, this community is not willing to do things like plant trees and do all the other things that we're wanting to do, I see two different trains of thought here. Let's do these other things and, oh, by the way, let's cut the millage rate. Don't be so anxious to cut the millage rate. Cutting millage rates, forgive me, cutting taxes, isn't necessarily conservative. It's not. There is a time when being conservative means, you know what, let's stay the course here for a little bit. Let's, let's be, let's be careful. Let's be careful with our community. So I'm, I'm not ready to do that. I think we've got a great budget in front of us. And yeah, would be, we'd be able to pound our chest, yeah, we reduced the millage rate. We saved you five bucks for the year, but we did away with our contingency or we did away with a sidewalk that would have saved lives. Not ready to do it. Sorry. Bill, you may proceed.
Gee, I'm glad to get back on the subject. I forgot to mention the commercial development, something like Ben just said, that obviously some of the empty space is not filled up. But the reason why the dog track expansion with the dog, with the gas station and the other things, they can't do anything until that road is basically going to be finished in a timely manner and that's the reason why they haven't. Ben, if I thought, and I've been in town for 20 years, if I thought that this was in any way would impair our ability to get trees, to build sidewalks, I would be the first one to agree with you. But really, we can, we can find...
Don't make me quote your quote on what you think about planting trees.
I never, I've never been against planting trees.
Your quote, your quote is, don't we have enough trees already?
In many places, we do.
Okay.
And matter of fact, in Worthington Country Club, we have too many. We've got to take the oaks out because they're now invading the sidewalks.
All right. I forgive me for interrupting. Go right ahead.
That's okay, that's okay. So I just, you know, it's, for what it's worth, I'm not trying to, I wasn't trying to surprise anybody, but there's a policy up here, we're not allowed to talk to our fellow council people and about that. And I don't do that. So it's an honest proposal, it's fair, it's reasonable. The finances by the accountant says it is. The city manager says we can do it. All I ask is consideration. That's all I came here tonight. I'm not here to make the meeting run longer.
That's okay, that's okay.
It's not my purpose.
Thank you very much. Any, any other comments on the motion? There's a motion and a second to reduce the millage rate when we get to that point by two cents. Any other discussion? Okay?
Well, also giving alternative, I'll also be willing to go to a penny if it happens. No matter what it is. I know I shouldn't say it.
Follow the question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reduce the millage rate by two cents to a .8073.
I do have my comment.
Oh, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, this, Bill, I'm sorry, but there are ways that we can get this out in front of people before we get to this point in this, and that's, you know, we have other meetings, we have council meetings that you can bring up your own concerns and I, you know, I'm, frankly, I'm flabbergasted. They were at this point and we're talking about this sort of thing. I am. You can turn your head and whatever.
I'm not turning my head, I'm listening.
I'm just saying.
Easy, counsel.
I'm just saying, to put this in front of council when we have a budget set and, and the city recognizes that it's the fifth year in a row that we have not raised taxes, we have asked our city staff to squeeze themselves to the point where we don't have to hurt our public, I think we're in good shape. To take two cents out of the millage rate is, it's, it does not strike me as appropriate because it doesn't do much except put us on the spot of trying to vote against... because it doesn't do much except put us on the spot of trying to vote against motherhood when, when we, if we take a vote of no, no, I don't want to reduce the taxes. So I, for the good of the city, I'm not gonna support this, this motion.
Okay. All right. Any other comment before we, we call question? Yes?
I'm always supportive of giving staff a raise, but we did that last year. We made up for our deficits on, for the staff, so I think they're doing okay. Now, there's a couple of them that would probably be doing better, we could take care of better, but that's not what this, this additional money is proposed to go to, and I think it's a good message to send.
Additional money?
Excuse me?
No, I'm saying, the $132,000 that this would look to not collect this year, because we don't have it in our pocket yet, right? We're proposing to collect it from the public. We're not proposing to give it to staff additionally, so, I mean, they'll be where they're at. I, I think we could do it. I think it's a good message. So I'll be voting yes.
Ben, can I comment again? I have something to say.
We're gonna go to everybody else there, hold on. Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, no, I just, I just had another thought. We, you know, we were discussing the EDC, and how nice would it be for Christine Ross to be able to say to attracting new businesses, not ones on the table, but even the ones on the table wouldn't mind hearing it, but new businesses potentially, we've lowered the mill rate in Benita Springs. It's gold, in my mind. It's absolute gold to be able to say that.
Okay, any other comment?
Yeah.
Yes, Bill?
And by, and, and the other thing I'd like to say is, the, the amount that was accomplished in this past year, we refinanced the debt. We saved $300,000 a year over the next 10 years. That's one thing. Mr. Schwing also negotiated with CM3 Hill and saved us another $200,000 over the past contract. All the things have to be considered before you make a decision based on the information that's available. I happen to think that that is fantastic. It's wonderful to see those kind of things. I'm not against spending money, but I am, I am interested in looking out in the future, because we are still the best place to be in southwest Florida, and will continue to be as far as I'm concerned. It's a wonderful place. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? And let's go ahead and have roll call. Oh, and before we do that, just a moment, just a thing of clarification here. Once we lower this, we cannot go back up. Is that true?
That's correct.
So we could keep it the same, and at that very last one, we could lower it.
That's correct.
But if we lower it now, and we find something out before now, and when we go to do this permanently, you can't bring it back up. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question then.
Okay.
We have one more scheduled budget meeting, so it gives us a month to think this thing through rather than.
Weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Well, it gives me something other than 30 seconds to try to think this thing through. And, well, it's not funny to me.
But it's right, you're right. You're exactly right.
So, okay.
Okay. And at that, yes, one more thing?
Just one, yeah, I'll just say that we did go down to .72 a few years ago, you know, and we were able to swing that.
2005.
2005. The rates were, I mean, the values were much higher, but I think the values are going up, so, I mean.
Well, no, they're, they're not.
Well, the real estate reports.
You hope that they will, right?
No, the real estate reports that I've read saying that values are, home values are going to be going up in commercial values.
Appraise values haven't went up.
Right, appraise values, no, but we'll be, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Slacta?
I'm gonna vote no, because I would prefer to defer it for a couple of weeks, so I'll vote no at this time.
Mayor Nelson?
No, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilwoman Simons?
Yes.
Councilman Longheart?
Yes.
Councilman McIntosh?
Nope.
Okay, that motion fails.
Can I try another one?
Um, let's, you were anxious for something, yes, go ahead.
Actually, there was just one item about the budget numbers that I wanted to bring to your attention. It does need action tonight, but I feel like we need to get it on the record, and that